Good evening, welcome to the Townsible Falls Planning Commission Meeting July 22, 2025. Please stand and salute the flag.
Let's salute the flag of the United States of America to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. O'Brien, call the roll please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien is here. Mr. Everett?
Here.
Ms. Leschuck is absent. Mr. Hartzell?
Here.
And Mr. Haney?
Present.
All right, we'll move on to item number one, Pensbury High School redevelopment. 608 South Olds Boulevard, 705 Hood Boulevard, 75 Unity Drive, TMP number thirteen dash zero one five dash one seven five, thirteen dash zero one five dash one seven five dash zero zero one, thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero zero three, thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero zero three dash zero zero one, thirteen dash zero one eight zero zero three zero zero three, thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero zero three dash zero zero five, thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero zero three dash zero zero seven, thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero two two, and thirteen dash zero one eight dash zero two five. Preliminary and final land development.
Good evening. My name is Sean Duffy. I'm an attorney with the law firm Obermeyer. Joining me tonight are the, we have Dr. Thomas Smith, who's the school district superintendent. We have Terry DeGroot, the projects engineer of Terraform Engineering. We have Mike Strohacker of KCBA Architects, and then Dave Horner of Horner and Cantor, who is the projects traffic engineer. As you may recall, we were here back in January with a sketch plan submission. Since that time, we've submitted a preliminary final land development application. We are in receipt of the township engineer's June 17, 2025 review letter. We've been coordinating closely with the township engineer and staff in addressing all technical comments related to that review letter, and subject to any plan changes, we are a, will comply. The current plan remains substantially the same as the sketch plan that was submitted back in January. No zoning issues have been identified. We've been identifying several waivers that are probably going to be necessary related to the project, and a waiver letter will be forthcoming. Additionally, a traffic impact study has been completed and submitted to the township. The study confirmed the adequacy of the proposed access points and redistribution of traffic, and Dave Horner will provide just a general overview of the study's findings. We are also pleased to report that a planning module exemption has been issued by DEP, and a pre-application meeting has been scheduled for, with the county conservation district in terms of, for the modification of the existing NPDS permit. And for tonight's purposes, we are not requesting a recommendation from, from this body. For tonight's purposes, we're, we're just trying to show you the progress that we've made thus far since our sketch plan submission, and then are looking to just entertain any comments that the, the planning commission may have, questions, comments, or concerns. And I think with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith, who, who will provide some brief remarks.
Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the board of directors and the administration, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to come present to you this evening. We recognize the size of this project and the impact it has on its, on the community, and it's very important for us to dot every I and cross every T. So as was mentioned, our goal tonight was not to inundate you with information, but really to structure this out over a couple of meetings, so you can get all of your questions answered. With that, again, on behalf of board, we have one board of director here with us. You're going to meet the rest of our team, but I just want to say thank you for your, for allowing us to present this evening, and we're very excited to move this project forward. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Terry DeGroot, who is our engineer on the project.
Thank you. I am Terry DeGroot with Terraform Engineering. I know it's been a while since we have gone over this plan. I would like to give you a brief overview. If at any time anybody has any questions, put your hand up, yell. I'd be happy to go into more detail. Okay. So this is an existing conditions plan. To the upper left, you'll see the West High School. To the lower right, you'll see the East High School. In the middle, you'll see the stadium, and the turf field to the right, which is currently under construction. On the upper right of the plan, we have Village Park Elementary School, which is currently not used as an elementary school, but they do have some programming there still. The new high school is going to go in the area on the lower left, the open field that you see there. Okay? And currently, we have multiple driveways coming into the site. There are two driveways from Hood Boulevard going towards the East High School. We have a driveway for the park, gravel parking lot at the corner of Queen Anne and Hood Boulevard. We have... Control, oh, oh, they're sorry about that. Let me make this a little bigger for you. There you go. Okay. There's two existing driveways off of Queen Anne going to the West High School, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven driveways along Olds. So we're going to clean that up a little bit, and I'll show you briefly. This is a proposed layout, excuse me, demolition plan. Let me skip over that. Obviously, the old buildings are going to be removed. And one thing I want to make clear, the new high school is going to be built while the existing schools are in operation. So it'll be a phased project. We build a new high school, get that ready for occupancy, move the kids in, and then we start taking the other schools down. Here's our proposed layout. As you can see, this is the final plan that shows the high schools and Village Park removed. The new high school is located close to the intersection of Queen Anne and Hood Boulevard, running primarily along Hood Boulevard. We've made several improvements to the current conditions. We've limited the number of driveways on Olds Boulevard to two. The driveway at the top of the page is an exit-only driveway. The driveway along the middle of Olds, along the furniture of the school, is an entrance, one-way-in driveway. Also, as we go around the Queen Anne, you'll see that large lot to the left of the car parking lot. That is exclusive for bus loading and unloading. So bus loading will be entirely separate from car parking and parent pickup and drop-off. Parent pickup and drop-off. Cars will enter from Olds, come to the front of the high school, drop off, and then exit out through Olds. There's also an interconnection between that parking lot and the Hood Boulevard entrance. The existing driveway that goes past East High School and Village Park will remain, although will be rebuilt. We're adding a new road north of the stadium to provide full interconnectivity across the campus. So that's, I think that's a big improvement from, from what's there now. So that gives you a general idea of what we're doing. We also have additional parking to the east of the new school, and east of that, there will be bus storage. Currently, the buses are stored, some are stored at West, some are stored at East, and a few buses are stored at BAME. They're all going to be consolidated here, and they're also going to have maintenance facilities on that. So that gives us an overview of the project. So we have a couple of new driveways. The driveway is on Olds. We tried to respect the same locations that were currently there, so as to provide the, as least disruption as possible to the neighbors. And obviously, we removed quite a few driveways in, in that area. We've increased the number of parking spaces that are currently on, on the site to better accommodate large events. The bus loading area is also, serves as double function and can be used for car parking during, you know, after-school and, and non, non-bus hours. So that's, that's another big improvement. The plan before you now, this is the grading plan. You'll see the, we have several detention ponds on the property. You see those large circles? There's one up between the driveways on Olds. There's one at the intersection of Olds and Queen Anne. There's another one along Queen Anne near the bus loop, and then two conjoined ponds at the intersection of Queen Anne and Hood. In addition to those above-ground basins, we'll have several underground basins as well. I think one, two, three, four, six. And as part of the review comments, I believe we're adding two additional underground basins to meet your stormwater ordinance, which is very stringent. I think this, when this project is done, there'll be a noticeable difference in the amount of stormwater coming off the site. Currently, there's very minimal stormwater controls on the property. We have met with your township engineer to discuss his comments and our approach to making those revisions, and I appreciate your time, Mr. Jones, in both in person and, and on the phone, to make sure that we're going in the right direction. Okay. This is the utilities plan. As we said before, we have the proven DP for the sewer. We have to finish coordinating with sewer and water authorities for the details of those services, as well as the power and gas companies. All right. So I believe that gives you an overview of the plan. Like our attorney mentioned, we will be asking for a few, I'll call them technical waivers, you know. One, first on the list is preliminary final plan approval, and a couple of other technical waivers, which we'll detail in a letter when we resubmit the plans. I think the biggest one, we can, we can talk about it right now, I guess, is, let me go back a couple of pages here. Here we go. See if I can zoom in. The large parking lot, or both parking lots, actually. If you can see on the screen, we have a ten-foot-wide aisle between each aisle of parking. We do not have the, the ears, if you would, on the ends of the aisles. So the purpose of that is to make the parking lot easier to maintain, snow removal, and at the same time, we're adding more grass area within the parking lot than, than your ordinance would require. We've done this design on several large institutional projects, and it has, has worked well for us in the past. That is one of the items that we will be asking for a waiver on. All right. So are there any questions about what we're doing or the general layout?
Generally, I was kind of surprised with the size of the packet and the exceptions. It makes more sense now that this is basically a sketch plan version two, that you don't want to vote tonight, because it was going to be hard for me to vote on anything with the amount of items that are missing that were requested by the engineer. A few things that were supposed to be here before this meeting that are not, some calculations and other things that were supposed to be provided per the engineer's letter. So I really have no questions, an overview. I mean, I can't give an educated opinion on it without seeing a lot of the documents that should be included with this package.
It's understood and appreciated. We're here tonight to give you an update on where we're at in the process. So, one thing I did neglect to mention, we are maintaining pedestrian access from all the paths from the adjoining neighborhoods. You know, there's one from the north going to the west side of the stadium, and there are two coming from the east side of the site. Those will be improved and provide, you know, better pedestrian connection than we have today. So, all right. Well, if there are no other questions, I'd like to introduce Michael Strohacker, our architect.
Good evening. I'm Mike Strohacker with KCBA Architects. Just got to run through really quickly the building elevations. These will be submitted with the next mission, indicating that we do comply. We are under the 50-foot maximum height that the ordinance limits us to. This here is the main entrance, which actually is, faces Olds Boulevard. This is a typical classroom elevation. This is the back end of the auditorium here. Just to give you an idea, again, this is basically typical classroom wings here. And then this area here is the side of the admin area. So again, more classroom wings, whatnot. This is the backside of the gymnasium and locker rooms. This would be the auditorium here, cafeteria off to the side. And then, again, more classroom wings. It's a big school, there's a lot of classroom wings. The side of the auditorium, and this would be the side that faces Hood Boulevard. Basically, again, more classrooms. This is the science wing. So that kind of gives you an idea of the elevations. Again, these drawings will be submitted with the next mission that we're hoping to have then, near the end of the month. So... And then, just for reference again, just a real brief run-through of the floor plans, so to orient you a little bit on the bottom of the pages where Hood Boulevard would be, and to the left would be Queen Anne Boulevard. As I mentioned, the entrance kind of faces Olds Boulevard, although it's thousands of feet probably away from Olds Boulevard. So here we have basically admin and counseling, 1,000-seat auditorium. This would be the music department here, three-story classroom wing with a courtyard in the center to get natural light into all the classrooms. And then the eastern portion of the building, the majority of it, is athletics and physical education and the cafeteria. Then the second and third floors are mostly just all classrooms in the center portion there. Real quick overview of the building, but any questions on elevations or plans or anything? All right. With that, I'll turn it over to David Horner, our traffic engineer.
Good evening. My name is Dave Horner with Horner and Cantor Associates. I prepared a traffic impact study. It was just submitted recently, so obviously the engineer and the bank commissioner hasn't had a chance to review it, understood. So just to give you an overview, Terry did a great job of describing the access changes. I won't go into that again, except to say that the consolidation of the access driveways from what, about 13 right now to about six or seven, is a benefit, especially the fact that some of the, the access drives on Olds, for example, will be one way in, one driveway, one way exiting the other. By removing driveways, consolidating, and, and better defining how they're being used is an improvement in and of itself on this plan. In terms of the effect of this on the outside intersections, and when I refer to that, I mean, say, the signalized intersections of New Falls and Hood Boulevard, Hood Boulevard and Queen Anne, Queen Anne and Olds that surround the property, Hanford and, and Olds, unsignaled. Because the enrollment isn't any different. The faculty, the staff isn't any different. The bus traffic isn't any different. It's really just reconfiguration and consolidating and changing the onsite configuration. The impact of this, traffic-wise, on those external intersections is basically no change to the conditions that there are now. With that said, there is changes to the driveways and how they're being used. Certainly, once the engineer reviews our report, we can discuss any concerns he may have with regard to the township-controlled jurisdiction roads. Hood Boulevard is a PennDOT road. We've had preliminary conversations with PennDOT through a scoping application process several months ago, got some feedback. In part, that dictated the scope of the traffic study. Those driveways are not being physically moved or changed, proposed to be changed. The operation of them does. In particular, there's an unsignaled access opposite Warwick Circle right now. That is one that we identified that has some issues today in the peak hours because of the volume of traffic coming out of the school and into the school during the school dismissal and arrival times. There will be a change with that driveway in the sense that it is now serving the bus storage and maintenance facility, which will not have nearly the kind of activity that uses that driveway now. And that's a good thing, because it, it's unsignaled, so this provides a safer situation. All that is for PennDOT to comment on, and whatever PennDOT may require in terms of changes, let's say to the traffic signal for the school access onto Hood or any geometric configuration, the school district will obviously do what PennDOT requires. But that review will be, will be pending. So we'll be able to give an update the next time we're here, I'm sure, as to what PennDOT has to say. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to...
Just please make sure that we're working with the fire marshal. I know they commented in their letter that they wanted a couple of emergency accesses due to the driveway changes, just so we make sure we have access, not for public use, but for, get into, if we're getting a larger building, for ladder access, for a ladder truck and everything else, and even from the sports fields, for emergency response if we have an injury or something like that. So please make sure we take those into consideration, where they might not be public roadways, but we have access to those buildings.
Understood. We'll make, we'll make sure that coordination takes place.
Are there going to be traffic signals at the exits and entrances, because you're limiting them down from like 13 to six? So is also going in, is there going to be like left turn in, or you just have to come from one direction, make the right turn in, you know what I'm saying?
I, I know what you're saying. So in terms of, right now, there's one traffic signal at a school access, and that's to Hood Boulevard, so that's remaining. The other accesses, even though we're consolidating, results of my study did not identify that a traffic signal would be necessary at either any access onto Olds or to Queen Anne. We'll see what your engineer says about, about how he feels about that operation, but it's operating at a good level of service. I'm sure you've heard that term before, in terms of the grading system. It's operating at an A or a B level, and again, it's concentrated in those dismissal and arrival types. As far as turn lanes on Olds and Queen Anne, we didn't recommend any, but again, that could be discussed as to if, if the township feels there's safety concerns that need to be addressed. Certainly something we can take a look at, but we, we did not identify that need in the study.
I think it would be of value, too, that once you get the plans together, the traffic flow now is kind of crazy, how they're going to, how the start of school, what a drop-off's going to be, and at the end of school. So we know where pedestrians will be walking, where the buses are coming in, and where cars are, because right now, it's, it's chaos.
I agree, and this is a much better internal flow. We'll make sure that that's identified for you on the plans and/or the traffic study.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Pending any questions, that's all we have for the, for this body tonight. Thank you.
Just some of the things just I have is that when we get this, please make sure that it's phased, so we know what's coming first with construction. My concern is that you are going to have the school in session at the existing property, so safety for the kids, safety for traffic with construction vehicles, and, and so kind of need to know what's going on, what that plan's going to be. Also, please, before you come back for us formally, you have the conversation with Bristol Township. I'm under the understanding that that was done a long time ago and not recently, before we want to make a decision. They want to, since it's part of their property as well, we want their planning commission to be involved as well.
Yes, we're preparing a submission to Bristol Township as well. That's, that's in the works currently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take some voice from the public comment, if you have any. Take some voice from the public comment, if you have any.
Hi, Jennifer Metzger, Falls Township resident. I'm on Hood Boulevard, directly across from PHS West and East campuses. Yeah. So right now, does everybody realize that there are already dump trucks going back and forth slamming down PennDOT's road for Hood Boulevard just to get the stadium two turf done? And they're not using water trucks like they said they were going to. There's dirt everywhere. It's blowing consistently. We've already asked Prokopiac to get involved. At this point, we don't know if anybody has actually calculated it, but our group has. It's going to take more than 12,407 dump trucks just to flip the dirt that's there right now before this project even starts. Concerned about the fact that these guys are starting at 6:00 a.m. and slamming through at 4:00 p.m. all day long. I don't know how the kids are supposed to work through all of that. It's difficult enough just dealing with the seniors on the street that we're talking to and just trying to get our own work done. The traffic engineers, part of the problem that I've seen throughout this year is anytime the traffic group comes in and says that they're doing a study, they're usually taking like six or seven satellite photos and saying, hey, everything's great, it's no big deal, 2:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m., noon time, whatever. At seven seconds out of history, it's not a realistic view of how backed up the rest of the streets are. If you're going to take this from seven driveways down to two, the problem with that is you still have 4,000 people. You have all of the teachers and all of the students on that campus that now you're trying to funnel in one way in and one way out, like in elementary school. That's not realistic for this high school, especially when you're letting everybody drive at this point. And you're not accounting for the fact that we're going to have contractors and materials and concrete coming in and out of that campus at the same time for the next five years without the additional parking yet. Assuming that these 10-foot aprons in the parking lot is just so that we can get away with the impervious calculations. So I'm wondering if anybody actually included those on the waivers? Because this is going to be an extreme percentage of the land being used at this point, especially since they're trying to shove a 500,000-square-foot building into 60 acres. Concerned because in these plans for KCBA, they're talking about the prom route, and they're talking about this additional road going behind the two stadiums. The one stadium we knew we were going to get, the second soccer stadium we didn't know we were going to get. It's in a waterway. So I'm interested to know if that's one of the waterways that they're going to try to fix when they do all these basins. And then if they're going to have five basins above ground, how are they going to figure out water movement and making sure that there's no mosquitoes and everything? Because we do have a big problem with standing water in the area. Concerned about whether or not we're going to get access to this packet that was submitted. It's not posted anywhere. It wasn't on the planning commission meeting site. So I wasn't sure if that's something that's going to be updated in the documentation.
We just got the drawings that we're showing at first. We didn't get the architect yet.
You just got it yourself, I believe that. We're also wondering size and impacts on the community. Dr. Smith is happy about it. So with the bus depot that we're getting, when was it decided that this was going to be a maintenance lot now? So the buses are also going to be fixed on the property? Is that a new or a separate thing that I missed? So now we're going to also have a mechanic shop on the property?
I would have to defer. We're getting presented the same information.
Same thing. Okay, that's fair. I appreciate that. Okay, above-ground basins. Oh, you've done designs on several large institutions. I'm glad you said it. Sketch version two. Number of missing items, pedestrian walkways, maximum 50 height. Right, so with the 50-foot height of the building, are there no provisions or limitations for them to have the greenhouses, the HVAC systems, whatever towers they need on top of that 50-foot building? And that doesn't count the six-foot piers underneath the building above ground? So the building's actually going to be at 70 feet? So that's not part of the calculation though, right? We're just talking about structure?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Ms. Metzger. The plans show that it's a 50-foot, right? The plans show from the grading that they're going from ground level to the top at 50 feet. There are some equipments that are, that's what the plans say. I'll let the engineer describe that to you. There are some equipments on top of that, and our ordinance allows for a listing of equipments. And so we're going to defer that zoning decision to the solicitor's office and the zoning officer to make sure that the things that are on that building are in compliance with the list that's given in the zoning. And I believe personally that they will be, but that's not my decision.
Okay, so then I guess my question was, those six-foot piers then, to lift it off the ground because they think they're going to do a floating slab for 500,000 square feet?
Those piers would be underground.
Are they?
The building won't be on stilts like a shorehouse.
Okay, so the plans keep changing for that. Is that because the ground is uneven? Or is that because they just haven't decided what type of foundation?
I'll let the applicant's engineer address it. Because we're not privy to the soil bearing studies or anything like that.
And a lot of these things, we didn't receive yet. And that's like with our, what the engineers comments back with what they're going to put for exceptions and stuff like that. We still need to see that. And that's, I mean, from my, coming into this, I didn't know this was going to be, basically, I said, sketch plan two.
I didn't either.
When I approached this, I had a huge packet with orange marks because I was going through it. But it's, they don't want to vote tonight. So that's information we will get, and then we'll be able to review it and then talk to it.
Thank you so much. And then the only other two questions that I had before we go back to the stilts is the additional corridors that KCBA has mentioned, are they something that is going to be drawn into this permit? So in two or three years, when they add the additional corridors after the building is finished, we'll know about that additional square footage? Or is that something we're just going to add as a phase in a few years afterwards?
I would assume it would be penciled in, but I would default.
Okay. And then the last question that I had at this time was, how many doors are we planning for this new building? Because that was the issue with West. We didn't want to replace the building or upgrade it because there were too many doors for the building that we couldn't manage to close. So without a civil engineer, we have an architect now. So if they could tell us how many doors the new building has.
Okay. That's something we can look into.
Thanks.
I'll just note, in addressing the comments that were just made, obviously, and as you described, Mr. Chair, that this is just for tonight's purposes, this is a high-level overview of the plan. A submission will be forthcoming where a lot of these comments will be addressed.
Great, yeah. And I think it's good for you to hear what the public has to say, too, to try and get in front of it.
My name is Wayne Bell, Falls Township. None of you live here. I have to wake up before 6:00 o'clock to hear those frigging trucks go up and down the street like they're a raceway. You need to talk to your guys and tell them, stop driving those trucks like they're crazy. 6:00 in the morning, Dr. Smith, if you don't mind. I was able to meet Jim Prokopiac, and I was really amazed at that guy. He's a really kind and subtle guy, almost like Colin, as I met Colin. And I really am appreciative. Nothing has been done about environmental health and safety for those children since I've been here for 40 years. Even their mission statement shows you. If you look at what St. Michael's has done, deciding whether or not to put apartment building or put schools, I mean, astroturf, they're doing the same thing. It's sports over scholastics. They don't give a shit about scholastics. Because if you did, you wouldn't be worried about a Hall of Fame and everything else that they're doing. If you look at the building, all you have to do is go down on Sloan Avenue off of White Marsh Avenue, and you will see a very similar building being built. 50 feet, I don't know how wide or whatever. It would be great if these people could get together and put lines in the street to show the community how big this building is, lengthwise, widthwise, and heightwise. They're putting 75-foot lights, LED lights, that will roast you. And I have evidence of this. So when you bring your other guy in here, Andrew, he better be on his Ps and Qs. I am a scientist by trade. Worked in the pharmaceutical industry. I have a master's degree. I'm not a dummy, and I don't expect anyone in this room to treat me like an asshole and sit up here and tell me all about this building and how great it's going to be when in fact, what happens if a bomb happens? What happens if a plane falls on it? How about if the flood happens? You know what happened in Bangladesh? You should look at the world news more often. This building is too damn big, Dr. Smith. It needs to be half that size. And besides, you probably could use West. They just got finished paying $45 million for West. Isn't that right? Del Witch, sitting there on her phone like she's an ignorant fool?
I don't mind you speaking.
I know, I'm done, I'm done, I'm done. God bless you all. I hope you look at the places on Sloan Avenue as well as where Nabisco was. Go down where Nabisco, Roosevelt Boulevard, and you'll see these huge buildings, very similar to the way the school is going to be built. It's not conducive to a school. It's more conducive to an institution. God bless you all, and I hope you look up everything that they're talking about because I don't think they're really being honest with any of you. God bless you. Thank you.
Robert Abrams, I'm from Lower Makefield Township, and I'm a Pensbury taxpayer, so I'm paying for this thing. Want to do something really quickly here. You approved 70-foot lights instead of 50-foot lights, and you did it because the guy that's going to be selling them to you, telling them to us for $500,000, half a million dollars, told you the higher they are, the less light they shine widthwise. Well, here's a very elementary little test. This is an LED flashlight. You put it here, you have a small circle. You move it up here, you have a big circle. If you want to do it this way, you still got a small circle. And then when you get higher, you get a big circle. So basically, he lied to you. Any questions? You're an engineer. He lied to you, and you didn't stop him? How much more this building is going to be a problem? Let me help you out. 45 years in the environmental industry. Everything from Ma Pa Fortune 200, medium-sized, 35 years in my own successful environmental business. Transportation and disposal. You have a pool that's in your drawings. The water level from the testing has it two and a half to four and a half feet above the water line now in drought conditions. I've asked three times, I believe, at finance committee meetings for them to retest now that the drought is gone. They have not, as far as I know. Hydroscopic pressures will take that pool right out of the ground, and nobody's addressed anything. How high does it go? I don't know. All we know is about two and a half to five. What I told them to do is spend a couple, $15 million on it, cut a hole in the bottom, wait for the water level to come up. Then we get the pool filled for free, and we just put a rubber stopper in it. This is ridiculous, what's going on here. This is done now to disenfranchise every voter here. And the reason there's going to be a Phase Two is because if the extension that they're going to do after they're done with Phase One is added in, I mean, the numbers that they're putting out are frauds anyway compared to other buildings, like-kind buildings. But if they put that in, for sure, there's no way, they can even lie about it. All right, let's go over some other things here. The way the building's structured is everybody's going in through one door. The bus drop-off is across the street from the entrance where everybody's going in. So that means the kids are going to be crossing the street in front of what kind of traffic? And you're going to put 4,000, 30, let's do 3,000. You're going to do 3,000 people going through one door? The bell's about to ring? How many people are going to get hurt? You might as well just put an ambulance on site for 180 days, because that's what's going to happen. And they've not addressed this at all. Now, under Act 34, they're required to address every single complaint from every constituent. The new road that they want to put in, and I have pictures in my email, if you'd like me to email them to you, Ms. Metzger took them, actually. There's actually drainage from the fields now. There's half-pipe there that's filled with water. So where's the water going to go when they put their new road in? Nobody addressed that. Where's the water going to go? I know, it's going to flow south. It's going to go right underneath the brand-new building. That, by the way, if you read the David Blackmore report, 61, 64.1% of that property is contaminated with organics. Do anybody know what happens to organics as they decompose? Call the landfill, methane gas. So they're going to have methane gas under the new building that's lighter than air, that's going to be permeating through the floors. Nobody's addressed that issue. That's where all that tonnage comes from. It's 12,000 trucks. It's about 148,000 cubic yards. I did the math, I have it, I will send it to you. Okay? Now, that doesn't include backfill trucks. Once they get that organic material out of there, they got to backfill it. I've again asked three times, what's the compaction ratio? Because that all has to be compacted to withstand destruction. Nobody will answer me. So you got to have at least another 12,000 trucks bringing backfill in. And if it's one and a half to one, now you've got 18,000 trucks. And if you want, if you want me to help you do the math, I'll leave you my card. It's already done. Did they submit a rehab plan for West, to extend West? No, they didn't. There were supposed to be meetings, never happened. Act 34 requires the district to have a rehab plan for the existing structures. They don't have it, and before you can approve this, they got to also submit that to you, I would think. But that's on you. Went through the organics. Oh, the packet that they're giving you, is that available somewhere to the public so that we can review it also?
We just got it, so I don't have it.
Yeah, but will it be on the Falls Township site?
Mr. Jones, will we publish that?
Is it a secret or?
Yeah. Not my understanding that we typically post land development plans, but you're free to submit a request for it.
Okay, fine. One more thing, they're going to have these basins. What we're hearing from the elder people, and we're talking about people in their late 80s, 90s, is that there was a creek or a stream under that property, which would make a whole lot of sense because it's got all kinds of water problems. The reason that it was filled in to become a park and because they had a horrible animal and mosquito problem. No telling what the organics are under that property. And if they put a shovel in it, and there's hazardous down there, and I've done hazardous up to low-level radioactive, there's going to be a problem here. There's not enough money in this whole county to clean that property. But if they're going to go put these basins back in, all you're doing is going backwards. The animals are going to come back and make it a home, just like the drainage basin two blocks from my house. We have deer and fox and whatever, and they come through my backyard all the time. But what's even worse is now you're going to have standing water. What happens in standing water? Mosquitoes breed. Right? So how, have they addressed how they're going to? You have to understand, there's people right across the street here. This lady is going to be right across, she's across the street from a field now, she's going to be across the street from a trash compactor. You're going to have more animals. They have no animal control, they have no mosquito control, they have no vermin control, they have no control about anything. Just put up the building, take the taxpayers' money, and spread the wealth. Guys, this project isn't anywhere near ready for anything other than major discussion by the four communities that belong to the Pensbury School District. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? All right. I can't hear you. Oh, do you state your name again for Diane, please?
Robert Abrams, A-B-R-A-M-S.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from Pensbury? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight.
No worries. All right. We'll move on to item number two, the approval minutes from June 24th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the board.
Call the board.
All right. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan, yes. Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Arzl?
Yes.
Mr. Haney?
Stain.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.